October 28th, 2025, regular meeting of the City of Troy Planning Commission. Copies of the agenda for tonight's meeting are available at the entrance to the room, and agendas and minutes of prior meetings are available on the city website. The meeting will be conducted in accordance with the agenda as presented by the Planning Commission. State law establishes planning commissions. This planning commission is comprised of nine residents appointed to serve our community. Members are appointed by the mayor and confirmed by city council. Other individuals participating in the meeting include representatives of the city's planning department, city attorney's office, and the city's planning consultant, Carlisle Wortman Associates. If you wish to address the Planning Commission, please come forward to the lectern when recognized and clearly print your name and address on the sign-in sheet. Please begin your remarks by stating your name for the benefit of all commissioners. All remarks are to be addressed to the Planning Commission and not to anyone else in the room. If you have a cellphone or any other device that might disrupt the meeting, please either switch it to silent mode or turn it off. At this time, I ask the Planning Commission Recording Secretary Kathy Zarnicki to conduct the roll call, please.
Mr. Beekner?
Here.
Mr. Faizan?
Here.
Mr. Fox?
Mr. Hudson?
Here.
Mr. Krent?
Here.
Mr. Lambert?
Here.
Ms. Malala-Hali?
Here.
Mr. Tagle?
Form present.
So we have three absent today. Okay, before we get to our first item on the agenda, for those of you who have not heard, former mayor Jean Stein has passed away this morning at age 96. As many of us know, she was a Troy City Council member for 30 years, and she was elected as mayor three times. Prior to that, she was a schoolteacher in the Claussen School District for almost 28 years, and we all know that she did a lot of, she dedicated her life really to volunteering and public service throughout our community. On a personal note, I met Jean about 10 years ago when I knocked on her door with my kids, trick-or-treating, actually. She lives, her home is about 10 houses down from mine, and beyond being a remarkable woman and a lovely neighbor, she was a true role model and inspiration. Um, excuse me. I'm humbled to be able to call her my friend. I saw Jean about three weeks ago, and I couldn't believe it, she was sharp as a whip. She was talking about the election, and she gave me advice about who to vote for, and I just couldn't believe it, and it's just sad that her body couldn't keep up with her mind, which is, it's her body that let her down in the end. I just want to quickly share a quick quote from an interview that she gave. She had said years ago, I don't know when she said it, but she said, quote, "I joined the convent thinking I would give my life to God, but convent life was not for me. I believe I am still doing God's work, but in a different way." And there are really no truer words about Jean Stein. I know several of you worked with her and also knew her in the community, and I'll look forward to hearing your comments or stories that you'd like to share during Planning Commission comment towards the end of the meeting. But at this time, I'd like to ask everyone to stand and join me for a brief moment of silence to honor Jean's life. Okay, we'll move on to approval of tonight's agenda.
I'll move it.
So moved by Mr. Krent, supported by Mr. Faizan. Any issues? Okay, we'll take a vote.
Mr. Faizan?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Krent?
Yes.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Parakis?
Yes.
Mr. Beekner?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great. Next is the approval of the minutes from our October 14th, 2025 meeting.
So moved.
Mr. Lambert moves, seconded by Mr. Beekner. Any edits, questions, comments? Seeing none, we're ready for the vote.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Krent?
Yes.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Parakis?
Yes.
Mr. Beekner?
Yes.
Mr. Faizan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, now we're on public comment for items that are not on the agenda tonight. If anyone is here who'd like to speak about something that is not on our agenda for tonight, please make your way up. All right, seeing no one, we will close public comment. Next on the agenda is zoning ordinance text amendment, file number 258, neighborhood node revisions. I think Mr. Carlisle's going to start us off with a PowerPoint presentation.
Yes, thank you. I, well, one, welcome, thank you all for attending tonight's meeting. I think, I hope this is the last outstanding item that we have to discuss as part of the neighborhood node discussion. I refreshed Chairman Prax's where we were in terms of process or the meeting, so I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page in terms of process right now. Like I said, I think this entrance issue is the last item for discussion based on our review. Once we are comfortable with this language, what we're going to do is bring back the entire node language with the node amendment maps, as well as one complete packet for a meeting for your consideration. Once you're comfortable with that, then we will schedule the public hearing. So you, as a board, have not made any formal recommendations at this point, you have not held any public hearings, so there is still some area for change with regards to the maps themselves, with the different site type classifications, as well as the text. So I just want to make sure everyone's clear that you haven't made any formal recommendations, and that's still yet to come, so there's still opportunity for additional input and additional change. Is that clear, everyone, where we are at the process? Okay, so based on our last discussion at the last meeting, there were really one last outstanding item for discussion, and that is regards to entrances in the nodes. The three changes that we have proposed since the last time we met was, we added an intent statement, we created separate entrance requirements for residential and non-residential, and I'll go through each of these individually, and lastly, for the residential, we allowed some discretion for the Planning Commission to grant relief. So we did not have an intent statement, and it's really important for many of these kind of nuanced items to have an intent statement to really clarify what we're trying to do in the node. So the intent statement as written is, "The intent of these standards is to ensure that entrances within neighborhood nodes contribute to a pedestrian-oriented environment, enhance architectural character, and provide an appropriate transition between public and private spaces. Entrances shall be designed to promote safety, accessibility, and a sense of place consistent with the mixed-use character of the district." This language is very consistent and very similar to the actual master plan language for the neighborhood node. So this practice, I didn't know if you want me to go through each, all this at one time, or you want to stop at each of these different points for discussion?
I'm thinking if you want to go through the whole thing.
Okay.
And then that way everyone can digest it, and then we'll come back and we'll go piece by piece.
Okay. So this PowerPoint, the language of this PowerPoint is actually verbatim, word for word, what's in the proposed ordinance itself. So the second portion is for non-residential. "The primary entrance for any building abutting a street shall be clearly identifiable, functional, and located on the street, front-facing, and directly accessible from the street." And we go and talk about entrance definition. These are actually existing languages already in the ordinance, so I copied that. And the last provision I put in here is that for mixed-use buildings, separate and distinguishable entrances shall be provided for residential and non-residential portions of the building. And the reason I have that is for most mixed, well, for mixed-use building, there should be a separate entrance for the commercial portion of the mixed use, as well as a separate entrance for the residential portion, so you don't have to go through the residential portion, or you don't have to go through the commercial portion to get to the separate and distinct use. I know Chair Bruce and Parakis has some discussion points about that. And then lastly, we obviously have discussed and struggled with this issue of residential entrances in the neighborhood nodes. So again, the same requirement for residential entrance is that the primary entrance shall be abutting the street, identifiable, functional, and located in the front-facing and directly accessible. The difference that we put in here, the nuance we put in here for residential and non-residential, is for residential, the Planning Commission has the authority to waive this requirement if it finds that these different findings have been met. And again, I, there are five of them, and I took the language that we, as a Planning Commission, had discussed at our last meeting about what's important, what do you want to try to achieve with residential entrances, what's important with them in relationship to the street. So these are really trying to be direct standards from the Planning Commission at your last discussion. So the first is that the residential building type requires additional security or privacy measures that render a public right-of-way-facing entrance infeasible. We talked a lot about the issue of security and transparency for residential structures located, you know, so close to these streets. Two, the development provides a sidewalk connections from the primary building entrance to public walkways, parking areas, and adjacent uses. Again, the Planning Commission talked a lot about how there should be a direct pedestrian connection from any entrance, whether it's facing the street or not, to public sidewalks, et cetera. Third, the development itself provides an internal pedestrian circulation system that ensures safe and convenient access throughout the site. Again, this is not just entrances and walkways to the building addresses, but also circulation as a whole within the site and external to the site. Four, the building facade that's adjacent to the street includes architectural design elements that advance neighborhood node zoning district intent of engaging the street, increasing pedestrian activity, and promoting high-quality design. The reason we put that in there was, we had some discussion about, okay, if it's not a primary entrance, then what are they doing with the back end of the building, or the end of a building that would face the street? And again, we think there should be some, you know, increased architectural design to make that an engaging entrance or engaging facade, even if it's not part of the primary entrance to the building. And lastly, buildings that are separated from the street by a landscape, greenbelt, or other transitional feature that reinforces the pedestrian environment and provides visual interest, again, to provide interest for that facing, that facade that's facing the street. So those are the proposed changes that we are recommending for both residential and non-residential entrances.
Thank you, Mr. Carlisle. As a starting point, I would like to thank you for doing such a great job. I think, I know it might have been frustrating at the last meeting, and it felt like we weren't getting anywhere, but I do think that we've come up with something far superior to what we had, so I'm pleased with it in general. I think the best way to go through it is to put the pieces back up one by one and basically see if anyone has any comments or edits, starting with the intent. Does anyone have any comment, corrections, or suggestions with the intent statement? Yep, Mr. Lambert.
Mr. Carlisle, you're the planning expert, so let me ask you as a layperson the question about the use of the term pedestrian in the planning world, and legally, does that encompass anything that's essentially non-motorized? For example, bicycles?
Yeah, it's a good, it's a good point, Mr. Lambert. Pedestrian really talks about walking. Maybe, maybe a better term is non-motorized oriented environment to encapsulate biking and other forms of transportation that's not just pedestrian, so I think that's an appropriate change that we could make.
Good one. Nice catch. Anyone else? Okay. Let's move on to, I guess it would be the non-residential. I'd like to comment, I'd like to start out because one thing I noticed was, for non-residential and residential, the primary entrance definition is the same. So one idea would be to pull out the primary entrance definition and have it follow the intent, and then break it down into non-residential and residential, because I don't see a reason to repeat the exact same definition. So the only other suggestion, if people are okay with that, and we can have a discussion, because I know we already debated it a little bit with Mr. Carlisle, is I tend to, and I take blame for this, because the original wording was adjacent, and I asked not to use that word, because adjacent is not a very precise term, because it means near or next to, but not necessarily touching. That's what, when you look it up in the dictionary. I asked for the use of the word abutting, but then I didn't like that after more reflection, because abutting tends to imply that there's, it directly touches or actually shares a boundary without any intervening space. I feel like the best word, in my opinion, is to use the word facing, because focus is on the orientation regardless of any setbacks. So I'm going to read the way I would define primary entrance, and I would define it as, "The primary entrance for any building facing a street shall be clearly identifiable, functional, and directly accessible from the front facade facing the street." So you'll also see that I took the directly accessible language and put it up after functional, so we're kind of listing the three things.
I'm fine with that.
Yep.
Mrs. Dufresne, do you want to weigh in?
I'm already on record that I don't agree with making changes, so, I mean, you guys, that's a debate that you guys can have.
Oh, I see, okay, right. So. Okay. So then if we move on to the non, then it would be, then we would be talking about the entrances, the entrance definition, where we would say entrances shall be distinguishable and identifiable, that would fall under the heading, "Non-residential use." And does anyone have any issues with the text that follows, meaning item C1ABC up there? Okay. So then we talk about mixed-use buildings, and I have two questions for everyone on that. The mixed-use, do the mixed-use buildings under this non-residential heading, are they also required to have the entrances that are distinguishable and identifiable, and are they subject to these three items?
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
I mean.
I would say so, and the reason I'd say so is because when we talk about mixed-use buildings, especially with our change to our ordinance, the residential portion's on the second story. And so if it's a commercial building, you still want that primary entrance on the front that faces the public right-of-way.
Okay.
Or the main road. So I think this covers the requirement for mixed-use buildings to have these primary entrances, because the first floor is going to be non-residential.
Okay. I would agree with that. I would just, I feel like it would be helpful to say, "In addition to the design features in Section 1C1, mixed-use buildings shall provide separate and distinguishable entrances for residential and non-residential portions of the building," so it's clear that they're subject to the above language. I also want to just throw it out there, I personally don't know that we need this statement at all. I would welcome the discussion of eliminating that piece altogether, and the only reason I mention it is because this requires it. It says, "Mixed-use buildings shall provide separate and distinguishable entrances." And what if we have a mixed-use building with, you know, a Chipotle and a dental office, and, you know, let's say there's four different things, and then on top we have apartments. But to access those apartments, what if they want on the front, let's say on the, whatever, Square Lake, I'm just making something up, but on the front, there's an entrance that leads into a lobby with a staircase or an elevator that takes you up to the residential floor? So what if it makes sense, then, to put doors inside the lobby that would connect you to the coffee shop and the restaurant, or the office building? Now, all of a sudden, we have an entryway that's not distinguishable or separate, and we've required it, so they can't do that setup. So I'm trying to think how, you know, I just, I don't want to totally jam them into that requirement, because I can think of an example where they might not want to do it. Any thoughts? Mr. Lambert?
I guess, Mr. Carlisle, once again, as a planner, your thoughts on, is there a reason why you suggest this particular language?
The reason, well, two reasons. One is I started, after we had this discussion, I started looking at best practices for entrances, and there's not a lot out there, let me tell you. And this was another provision, another code that I liked, and I think it made sense. And the reason is, is when you have a separation or mix of uses in a building, there should be a separate entrance for residential uses. I get Ms. Prax's point, but I think in that scenario, if it's a lobby, I would still consider it separate entrances for the residential portion and the commercial portion. And I'm not trying to overthink this, but the intent is that to get to a residential portion, you do not have to go through the commercial portion of the building, or vice versa. That's, that's it. That's the entire intent of what this language is going to be. If it's too confusing, or you think it creates too many nuances, we can certainly take it out, but I think if, if we had a mixed-use building, if Brett and I were viewing a mixed-use building, and there was a lobby, and it had, you know, an elevator to the residential, or stair to the residential, the door, and stair to the commercial, or door to the commercial, we would still think of that as two separate distinguishable entrances. So I don't think it would necessarily, we wouldn't treat it that way, as it applies to what the case you're bringing up.
Okay.
But again, I'm not gonna, if it, do you think this creates too much confusion for the applicant? We can certainly take it out. I think it was important to make sure that people knew that we expect different entrances for different uses if it's a residential building.
Okay. I'm fine with it. Does anyone else have any? Okay.
I like the way it is.
Okay. I mean, would you guys be okay with saying, "In addition to the design features in Section the thing above"? I would recommend adding that in.
Ms. Parakis?
Yes.
Just a question, and I know we've talked about this before, is there any need to define street more specifically?
It's defined in the zoning ordinance.
I'm sorry?
Street is a definition in the definition section of the zoning ordinance.
I didn't hear you, the last part.
Street is defined in the zoning ordinance.
Okay.
So it's already, it's already, that's already defined.
Okay, so that goes internal.
Yeah, in the definition section of the zoning ordinance, which is, I'm not sure.
Okay.
And that's why we went, we went back from public right-of-way, because that's not defined a street, because street's defined, so we just want to make sure there's common definitions.
Yep, Mr. Lambert?
This has nothing to do with our discussion, but I think it may be being picked up on TV, okay, but I don't know if the sound in here is very clear, because we can barely hear what you're talking about, but that's why. I don't know if they can adjust the volume to that or not.
I don't know that these really amplify, they really just record.
They used to amplify. I'll yell.
I think they would have run, have run in here by now if it wasn't picking up on the recording, so, they usually do. Okay, if we're ready to move on, we can move on to the residential. So for residential, I would, if we are removing that definition, we would just be able to go right into, "The Planning Commission may waive the primary entrance requirement in Section 1B for a residential use if the Planning Commission finds that all of the following have been met." I want to, at this time, make it really clear, so we're all on the same page about what this means, because this is super important that we all be on the same page about it. So the planning, this language says that we may waive, we have the discretion to waive the requirement if all five are met. So if not all five are met, we cannot waive it. But what it doesn't mean is if an applicant comes in and has satisfied all five of those things, we do not have to waive it. We can still say, okay, you've satisfied all five, but we still don't want to waive it, because for whatever reason we have. This is completely discretionary, if anyone disagrees with me, but this is how I read that, so I want to make sure we're all on the same page about that. Okay. The only other thing I'm going to throw out there, and I'm not saying I think we should do this, but I just want to throw it out there, another way we could do this is we could say, "The Planning Commission may waive the primary entrance requirement in Section 1B after considering the following standards and determining that sufficient criteria have been met." So that way, they don't have to do all five, just in case there's some circumstance where they really can't meet it, and we want to allow the waiver. Obviously, the drawback, the downside of doing that, is then we have applicants coming up and doing two things, and saying, "We think that should be sufficient," and then we're kind of stuck, and we're not bound by those criteria, and sometimes it's nice to be bound by the criteria, since they're things that we want to see. So I'm just throwing it out there for a discussion point.
So when I read this, and maybe I'm looking at it incorrectly, but this seems to be more onerous than the current language, because I feel like number four is what we require now, and then we're going to require, you know, one, two, three, and five. And we may waive the primary entrance requirement.
Well, one is simply, you know, they, they have to prove that just residential users of security or privacy concern. I think we've always acknowledged that that's a potential issue. And Mr. Faizan, I'll be honest, we wrote these so, I'll just say loose, that I don't think these are very hard standards to met if it's a good design. And so the, the primary entrance requirement is very specific. You know, you have that primary entrance that fronts right on the street, it's got to be accessible right from the road, it's a much more prescriptive, potentially onerous requirement, especially for residential building, than what I think we're proposing here, because it gives a lot, I mean, all this issues of sidewalk connections, landscape, greenbelt, are stuff we're going to be looking for anyways as part of a good development, a good design. So we wrote these so that they weren't so onerous, that they could be met with good design, but we still felt that it was important that the element, the elevation of the facade that fronts the street has to have some good design in a relationship, because that's the, that's the view that the public's going to see the most.
I agree with that. I think that's the most important thing.
Yeah.
And I feel like the conversation we were having before was around the definition of primary entrance. This is the one you have to go in and out 90% of the time, and I put that aside, but your point about what appears in the front of the building and facing the street, I think that's the most important thing.
Well, I will be honest, I added a lot of the pedestrian circulation, because that was a major point of emphasis of the Planning Commission at the last meeting, because you, the concern was, if they didn't have an entrance that is adjacent to the street, then it would enclose itself, and it wouldn't relate to the, what the intent of the node is for interconnectivity, et cetera. So put that in to make sure we emphasize that, that provision, so that, that's why those were added.
Yeah, and I was of a different mind than the.
I think you were.
So that, that explains part of that as well, so, thank you.
Yep, Mr. Lambert?
Just one suggestion, then a question, going about the word pedestrian, if you want to strike that, put non-motorized through this section, and then, and number two, where it talks about the primary building entrance, if we're talking about like the Pinnacle Project, which we dealt with a few weeks ago, are we talking about primary entrances, or what's, So if you have multiple homes or multiple living units in there?
I go, I go back to the primary entrance, which is the definition up here.
Okay.
So that's the term, "primary entrance."
Okay.
I think it would be applied to each unit.
Okay.
Each unit, yeah. Or, each unit, each suite, if it's a commercial building. Each unit, if it's residential.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else have any issues with the language in any of these five? I just want to point out on number four, I would say the building facade facing the street instead of adjacent. And then, one other thing, I just, I would like to reword number one. I just, I don't know that I like saying the residential building type requires additional security because it sort of begs the question of, how is, how is an applicant going to show us that they require it? I think we mean more, like, the consideration. So maybe it could be reworded, something like, "A primary entrance facing the street is not feasible due to security and/or privacy considerations." Something like that. Any other? Have we gone through it enough where you feel like we've, we've given you enough?
I do want to go back to the one point you had about this issue of, um, the plan cushion needs, it needs to meet all of them?
Oh, yeah.
Or if it meets, what do you, preponderance, you didn't use true preponderance, but the terminology you used? Because that, that's a pretty-
It's an important thing, yeah. I did throw it out there, so I would like feedback. Mr. Lambert?
Just a question for Ms. Dufresne. Assuming that you might have a court case about this, from a defensible position for the city, what is your preference?
Well, for something like this, I'd rather you guys leave yourself as much flexibility and discretion as possible. My concern, even though the languages may waive, which is discretionary, if you leave it at "finds all of the following," what happens in a situation where a developer meets all of the following? You find that the developer meets all of the following, and yet you don't give them the waiver? So I would prefer something that leaves you a little bit more discretion. If you, again, I don't get a vote. You guys get, you guys are voting. So you guys have to be comfortable with whatever the final decision is.
I mean, that, that's an interesting point, although if, if, if we have the discretion and we say they've met some of them or whatever, it doesn't change the fact if they meet all five, it doesn't help us in that situation if we still want to say no. So I do believe that saying we may waive it, we can have other reasons for, for not waiving it. I'm trying to think of what an example would be. But- But I don't know that offering the discretion helps with that. Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Faison.
I had a broader question for Mr. Dufresne. I know you said at the last meeting and this one, I think you said, you know, you have questions about changing the language. And what's the issue you see with, with that?
So, again, I don't get a vote, right?
Understood, understood.
So, and I'm not saying anything that Ms. Prakas hasn't read in emails, the back and change, back and forth exchanges that we've had going back, I don't know what, a year. The problem that I have with making these changes, I don't quite understand the reason for the change. This is, this comes down to an interpretation issue that Ben and Brent had been making an interpretation with respect to primary entrances that Ms. Prakas doesn't agree with. We are now just trading language for, you know, new language for a new interpretation, right? And what I'm hearing tonight, one of the things that's, that's giving me a little bit of heartburn is, you know, we have this language about any, in residential use, residential use, C1 primary entrance, the primary entrance for any building abutting a street. But then now the discussion is talking about, "Well, it could be a unit." Well, no, let's say what Ms. Prakas has said to me. We, but let's mean what we say, say what we mean. Well, if we mean in residential, the primary entrance for any unit abutting, then we need, we can't be using "building." So I guess my point is, I'm not seeing what we're solving, by making all of these changes, I'm not sure what we're solving because I'm not sure it's ever been articulated what the problem is. Because it's an interpretation issue that was the problem from, from the beginning. So, again, I have no problem. I think the language is great. And I have, I'm on record in an email with, with Ben and Brent, you know, when this language is presented to me. And I said, you know, I was, I am apprehensive, but I'm fine with this language. Every time we make a change to the zoning ordinance, a text amendment to the zoning ordinance, there's a collateral consequence that none of us are going to be able to anticipate. And we have developers out there who are going to, you know, interpret these, these, these provisions one way that we may not be thinking about right now. So, I mean, again, I, I understand, you know, we've worked along and we've talked about this issue for a really long time. And this is just one very small section of the zoning ordinance. I mean, it only applies to neighborhood node, neighborhood nodes. So anyways, I've said my piece. Again, I, I'm fine however this turns out, but I, I think we need to really understand why we're making, making the changes that we're making.
I appreciate that perspective. Thank you.
Mr. Beekner?
I think we all get that Julie doesn't get a vote, but we all listen to every word you say. So I think I can speak for everybody. So, and I think it's important for us to see that side of it, the legal side of it's kind of important. So, and I do, even though Brent's not in the room, I trust those guys. I think they know what they're doing. So that's where I am.
Are we going to change in the primary entrance the word "abutting" to "facing"?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's the plan. So, okay, so, so, I mean, I appreciate Mrs. Dufresne, and you, you know how I feel as well. I mean, I think that the purpose of the changes are to make sure that our planning department is, uh, it's, interpreting is okay, but the more specific you can, specific you can get in the zoning ordinance, so we're all on the same page, I think is helpful. That, that's sort of the motivation to, because when you start interpreting, there's different interpretations, and then you get yourself into trouble. So it was trying to tighten it up, really, and have the zoning ordinance say what we're actually doing. Have it be explicit as opposed to interpreted. That was the goal. So, I mean, we've gotten through it all. Unless Mr. Carlyle has any questions remaining about what we've discussed or if you feel that we've, we've reached some sort of consensus. I mean, I don't know. I, I don't know if Mr. Faison's on board. I don't know if as the remaining, you know, there's only six of us here tonight.
So, so, two, two points. One, hesitant to say this, but this isn't the last time you look at this language. There'll be additional time to look at it, so. Whatever decision he makes tonight's not the final decision. And then, two, I still don't, not sure if we're clear on the "may" versus "shall" and if "all" or "some." So, I, I'd just like some clarification on, on that point.
Well, I'm, yeah, go ahead, Mr. Faison.
So if, if, if I was a developer, putting myself in that, in those shoes, and I met all five of these, I would fully expect that I would get the, the waiver. That would seem to be a reasonable expectation. Like, if I met all five of these, what would, why would you not approve the waiver?
I don't know a reason. Again, it just seems a little bit of-
That's more of a rhetorical question.
No, it just gives a little bit of wiggle room. I mean, you have, you have the right to waive a, a, a limited number of other provisions of the ordinance. And nowhere does I think it says that you "shall" approve a waiver. I think the terminology is always, "You may approve a waiver if certain elements are met." So I don't know if we've ever gotten to the nuance before when we use the word "may" or "shall" for waivers before. And it's good, maybe something we should look at. But the terminology, I believe, is "may" for all the other provisions. And, you know, you have, you have landscaping you can waive. You have parking you can waive. Lighting perhaps you can waive. So, I wrote it to be consistent with how you've done it, how we've done it in the past. If the planning commission feels strongly that it should be "shall," we can certainly go to "shall."
I like "may."
I like "may."
I like "may."
I think, what, do you, does the rest of you, does anyone want "shall"? Or should we stick with "may"? Okay.
And then, all of them have been met?
Requiring all of them?
That's how it's written.
Go ahead.
Maybe just some wordsmithing to say that, instead of saying that there's all five findings, something along the, "Planning commission will consider these facts when considering whether to approve it."
So you're just suggesting it say something like, "The planning commission may waive the primary entrance requirement for the residential use upon consideration of the following factors."
Yes, I like that.
When you use the word "may," it's, it's considering, right? It's kind of, there's some question there. So I think that answers that question. I don't think you need to do it twice.
So then it leaves it even more open to, it's kind of like what I said originally, but, but it's even more-
Gives us more flexibility.
More flexibility. So if there's, I, I remember in the, in the pre-meeting a few weeks ago, I said to Brent, I said, you know, "What if they can't do a sidewalk because they can't drill down?" Or like, something we don't know. And then all of a sudden, we can't waive it. So I do like a little bit of flexibility there.
Okay. Well, I think, I think you're clear, and we'll, we'll write it accordingly.
Okay. Until, until the next time that we revisit this issue. All right. We're going to move on to public comment for items on the agenda. If anyone's here to speak about something we just discussed, please come forward at this time. All right. Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public comment. And we will turn it to planning commission comment. I'll start with Mr. Beekner.
I'm good.
Mr. Hudson?
Is there a motion on the floor?
Nope.
What are we talking about?
It was just a discussion tonight.
That text is fine. I don't see any reason to modify it. It's like, "How many angels dance on the head of a pin?" Let's get to it and get it done. This is, I get upset sometimes when we try and rework things that have had a lot of consideration in its formation. And I like the original text.
Thank you. Mr. Faison?
I just want to make sure the chair and the planning department know I support the primary entrance facing the street.
Mr. Lambert?
First, congratulations to Ms. Dufresne. At her first city council meeting, being the attorney on call that evening. And as she said, the fewer times the attorney has to speak, the better the meeting is.
I got to use my line that I like to use. Yeah, thanks to Mayor Baker.
Secondly, thank you Chair Prakas for your comments about Mayor Stein. I think, as I put on a social media, I served with her for three years on city council. We didn't always agree on everything, but she was always gracious in our disagreements. And as I said, her service to the city goes beyond her service as mayor and as a city council member.